Good evening. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Pastor Jason Howard, Community Director of Adult Ministries with Stone Creek Church, to lead us in invocation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council from Bauerheads. Father, we come to you tonight, Lord, at the start of not just another session, God, but just an opportunity, Lord, for the council to truly do the things that you've called them here to do, to preside over decisions that will affect and direct the community, that will continue to build a great city, the City of Milton. Father asks that, again, you just provide wise counsel to Councilwoman Thurman, and Councilman Kuntz, and Lusk, Hewitt, Longoria and Large, and also, Father, our Mayor, Joe Lockwood. Father, also, to protect the police that are here, the service members, Lord, who are watching over our city. God also all the support staff. And also, Father, a special blessing to the young men who are assembled here, God, our Milton High School basketball team, Lord, that they are truly our future, that they would know that they have a special call in their life to go and to invest in this city, invest in this nation, and invest in this world. God may us come together and to be, again, the great city that you've called us to be. In it's your name, I pray, all these things. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Howard. Appreciate you being here. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council from Monday, April 9th, 2012, to order. Will City Clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I will be happy to call roll for the April 9th, 2012, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cellphones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment, either during the public hearing or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in the order that the speaker cards were received by the City Clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization, if applicable. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided, however, that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the City Clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Here.
Councilmember Matt Kuntz.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk.
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, and thanks again, Pastor Howard, for being here, and also, we're very proud to have our Milton High School basketball team and coaches here. So, welcome, and we're excited for the reason that you're here. So, we'll move on. Will the City Clerk please call the next item?
Our next item is approval of meeting agenda. This is Agenda Item Number 12-072.
Okay. Is there any items on the agenda that need other additional items to be considered?
Mr. Mayor, I do need to add executive session for litigation and land acquisition.
Okay. Anything else, Council? Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the meeting agenda as prepared by staff with the addition of executive session to discuss litigation and land acquisition.
I second the motion.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Do we have any public comment tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. The City Clerk will read the items aloud.
Our first item is approval of the February 22nd, 2012, special called work session minutes, Agenda Item Number 12-073. Next, approval of the February 22nd, 2012, regular council minutes, Agenda Item Number 12-074. Approval of financial statements for the period ending December of 2011, Agenda Item Number 12-075. Next, we have approval of financial statements for the period ending January 2012, Agenda Item Number 12-076. Next, approval of a renewal contract between the City of Milton and AT&amp;T, Agenda Item Number 12-077. Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and JJE Constructors, Inc., for a headwall and shoulder repair on Bethany Bend Road. This is Agenda Item Number 12-078. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton, Georgia, and TransMap Corporation for a citywide pavement condition survey. This is Agenda Item Number 12-079. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the Winter Construction Company and the City of Milton for pre-construction services, Milton Public Safety Facility. This is Agenda Item Number 12-080. Our ninth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of Better Together, Real Communities Milton Mini Grant Program Contract, Real Communities Initiative, between the Georgia Council on Developmental Disabilities and the City of Milton. This is Agenda Item Number 12-081.
Okay. Do I have a motion, a second, on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda as read by the City Clerk.
I second that.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Large. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. We'll move on to reports and presentations.
Tonight...
The City Clerk will read it aloud.
Tonight, we have a proclamation recognizing Milton High School's 2012 Georgia 5A Boys' Basketball Champions. This proclamation is being presented by Councilmember Karen Thurman.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation, and then we can all go down and get some pictures and have a little bit of a refreshment. Proclamation, Milton High School Boys Basketball Day 2012. Whereas basketball, the truly American game invented in Springfield, Massachusetts in 1892, is a sport that requires skillful hand-to-eye coordination, mental awareness, agility, grace, and teamwork, and whereas the Milton High School Boys Basketball Team has a tradition of excellence and accomplishment in athletic and academic competition reflecting the highest ideals of hard work, training, and sportsmanship, and whereas the Milton High School Boys Basketball Program has been active in the school for decades without a state championship, and whereas between 2008 and 2012, the Eagles have played in the state championship every year, leading to two separate titles in 2010, and the most recent one, March 10th, 2012, against Savannah by a score of 79 to 67. And whereas, in the title game, Shaquille Johnson had 23 points, Tevin Glass had 17 points and 10 rebounds, and Jalen Patterson and Evan Nolte had 16 points each. And whereas, Evan Nolte started in four consecutive state championship games, the result of having a hand in winning 110 games in four years on the Milton Eagles basketball team. And whereas, this season, the Eagles went 28-4, giving four-year coach David Boyd career win number 601 in the state title game. And whereas, the players on the Milton High School Boys Basketball Team are champions not only on the court, but in the classroom, in the community, and in life, and we are proud this great team is located in Milton, Georgia. Now, therefore, we, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Milton, hereby dedicate Monday, April 9th, 2012, as Milton High School Boys Basketball Day in the City of Milton, Georgia, given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this night day of April, 2012. Thank y'all. I just want to say that I am very proud that y'all are part of Milton High School and part of the City of Milton, and that you have represented the city very well, both on and off the court. So, if you want to come down for some pictures and some refreshments. There you go. Come on, let's go try with all y'all. There you go. Yes, never forget. There you go. Oh, well, all right. They're probably better. Got him in the back. I have got several extra. There you go. Thank you. Where do you need us to go? Behind the players.
This place, what we have to do is reach the end here, and get it, be okay? And just see, tall people in the back, short people in the front.
Okay. There you go. I'm waiting the end here.
There you go. The cheese is spread out all the way. Yep. Hold on there. Hold on there. Because then you open up a little bit of metal. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two. How you guys doing? Pretty bright. You got a little special. Come on in.
Come on in.
Stop right there. It's a film, man. Yeah. Okay, everybody, let's do this again. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two. How you guys doing? Pretty bright. You got a little special. Come on in. Stop right there. Yeah. Okay, everybody, let's do this again. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two. How you guys doing? Pretty bright. You got a little special. Come on in. Come on in. Stop right there. Yeah. Okay. I'm going to tap a break. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two. How you guys doing? Pretty bright. You got a little special. Come on in. Come on in. Stop right there. It's a film, man. Yeah. Okay, everybody, let's do this again. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two. How you guys doing? Pretty bright. You got a little special. Come on in. Stop right there. It's a film, man. Yeah. Okay, everybody, let's do this again. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect, nice. Guys, great. Thank y'all. Come on, get yourself a eight. The drinks are in the cooler here. Hi, how are you? I'm just taking a short cup, man. Drink for right over there. I didn't like that kid. My problem is I forgot to throw out my luck. Yeah, I think I did. Yeah. 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 Well, I think everybody's getting there.
Yeah.
We're just moving along pretty good, I'm just thinking.
Yeah. 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 Damn. That's a mighty good brownie.
Yeah, and that was only four chargers.
Nice.
So, you know, you hear... That's $10,000. Is that all the mustard projector? Yeah, I guess. Yeah. Yeah. What does that practically mean? I don't know about you, one of them. I don't know what I'm going to do with my time. Technically, that's a little more than I should work. Huh? Oh, yeah. Turn it back into... I got 10 gallons of fuel. I crashed that one next. I didn't run it. I didn't run it. But it was nasty. I thought I was just... Be smart, save some money. Gas going up so much. Yeah. I got some diesel tanks, just fuel tanks in my house, and I have 600 gallons. Oh, filled up with diesel. Kind of filled up, so I can ride diesel. Right. I can ride my truck. I didn't have any in a couple of years, and then there are the next ones you buy. I didn't even think about it, but, you know, moisture and stuff collecting. Right. Oh, yeah. Pulled it up. I went to go fill up my truck, and I noticed, pulled it out, and just money walking out of the pot. I didn't drive, I got a foot...
Make sure they come up and get to eat the rest of this, so we don't need it.
I didn't feel... Four or five ankles. I mean, it's... Well said.
Yeah. Yeah, they're welcome to come up during the middle of meetings and...
Oh, no.
We don't have that much on the agenda.
You know the test thing, though? Church claws. Storm, fall, water.
But I do have my heater button here.
Oh, really? Wow. What a deal. You're a wood...
Panic button.
Panic button? What are you there for?
In case somebody decides to come in, you just push the heater button, and they come.
Big guys.
You didn't realize...
They probably would go left or right, you know.
You didn't realize I had that very important job, do you?
I realized that.
Y'all grab your cupcakes for the road. Or two.
Thank you. Yeah. Which would have been fine, too. 600 gallons of diesel. Okay. We'll go on to our next item of business, which will move on to our first presentation. The City Clerk, please sound your hours.
Our first item is RZ 12-04 VC 1201 12990, Georgia Highway 9, Out parcel 3. 22-527 01047-276-5, By Webb Road Promenade, LLC, to rezone from mixed, mixed use to C1 Community Business, to develop a 3,321 square foot dry cleaners and request a concurrent variance to reduce the 20-foot landscape strip to 10 feet along Highway 9, Section This is Agenda Item Number 12-082. Our next item, RZ 12-02, Ordinance to Adopt the Corrected City of Milton Zoning Map as indicated on the Geographical Information System, GIS, including all zoning actions prior to January 1, 2012, as shown on current zoning map dated January 2012. This is Agenda Item Number 12-083. Our final first presentation item is RZ 12-03, Ordinance to Amend Article 18 of Chapter 64 of the City Code, Historic Preservation Commission. This is Agenda Item Number 12-084.
Okay. Do I have a motion, a second?
Make a motion to approve the first presentation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. We have no items under public hearing, zoned, agenda, or unfinished business, so we're going to move to new business. The City Clerk, please call the new business.
First item is approval of a resolution to adopt the personnel policy of the Milton Police Department. This is Agenda Item Number 12-085. Ms. Deborah Harrell.
Good afternoon, good evening. In addition to the city having a personnel policy manual, the police department has one also. Nothing in there conflicts with the city, but we just have to cover some additional topics that aren't covered in the city manual, such as use of force, vehicle pursues. All of our policies currently are written to state certification standards. About 75% of them are written to national standards. I'm working on the additional 25, get that up to 100, get us nationally certified. In accordance with the charter, we wanted to bring you the manual and have you give us your approval.
Do you have any questions, Council?
I'd just like to ask, so basically, it goes above and beyond the city's policies, and it matches all state policies, and three-quarters, about three-quarters of it matches national.
Right, and I'm working on, we're working on getting nationally accredited right now, so there will be revisions to the policy, so you'll see this coming up as I revise policies, and hopefully in about a year, we'll be having our onsite to get that national accreditation.
Okay. Councilmember Longoria?
Chief, is it pretty, and maybe this might be deferred to Chris or to Ken, is it pretty common practice to have it split up this way? In other words, if you've got personnel manuals, policy manuals, to have something separate for the lease? That's pretty common.
It is, and as long as I've been in this line of work, there have been kind of parallel policies. One, again, and the chief highlighted, they don't conflict, but there are things that she will need to have the ability to change in her policy as the accreditation standards are a very living, breathing type thing. They'll send up updates every year, and it's going to cause her to have to do certain things with her policy at the speed that she needs to be able to do it at, that we don't necessarily have to do on a citywide basis.
And the only reason I ask is because, you know, whenever you have two copies of something, one of them's normally wrong, and so I would hate for us to get into conflict accidentally, and so I was just making sure that this is common practice for municipalities.
And there's not typically redundancy between the two. These are going to be things that she needs to have policies...
So, these are above and beyond, these are exceptions more...
Okay. That's right.
And I'm very careful to review the city policy as I'm writing the particular... If I'm working on our hiring policy, I have the city hiring policy out. I also take them to Sam Traeger, so that he can give me his approval on anything I'm putting that's a personnel issue. It's actually more likely that I would have a conflict within my own policy manual, because it's so thick, than with mine to the city.
Sure.
But obviously, yes, you don't want them to conflict.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Bill?
Chief, when you apply for national accreditation, are you subjected to onsite reviews and interviews by representatives from the federal agency?
Yes, we signed the contract saying that we wanted to work towards it. Yes, we, we signed the contract saying that we wanted to work towards it. I have three years to tell them that I'm ready. They'll send three assessors from outside the state of Georgia, and they could come from anywhere in the United States or even outside the country. They'll go over all the policies, they'll ride with officers, they'll interview all kinds of different people, and then they'll, they'll have a public hearing where the public can come, they'll have a phone-in session, and it'll all be advertised to the public, and then they, they go back to the council. We have to present at a commission meeting, and then they vote on granting us our accreditation, which they will do.
Okay. Quite a process.
And I wish I knew the percent, but it's a very small percentage of agencies that, that achieve that level.
Okay. Do you see any thing that would prevent us from achieving that?
Good deal. Anybody else? Thank you, Chief.
All right.
All right, do, I have a motion and a second.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution to adopt the personnel policy of the Milton Police Department, agenda item number twelve dash oh eight five.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Thurmond, second. By Councilmember Coos. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. You can move on to the next item from the city clerk.
Next item is approval of a resolution of the city of Milton, Georgia, establishing a moratorium on the enforcement of the telecommunications operating license fee associated with annual registration for owners and users of telecommunications facilities. This is agenda item number twelve zero eight six. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have in front of you a proposed renewal and extension of a moratorium addressing a particular part of the city's telecommunications ordinance with respect to our annual permitting and inspection fee that was imposed when we adopted a new telecommunications ordinance in roughly two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven. You may recall that this was sort of an omnibus rewrite of what we had inherited from Fulton County. We had some consultants come in to assist us with this, and it was sort of part and parcel with some of the litigation that has been ongoing, which is why we saw some of the deficiencies in our existing code. Well, one of the things that was adopted at the time that we adopted our new ordinance was an annual inspection and permitting fee of a thousand dollars per tower, and quite frankly, per facility on the towers. So the towers not only have one structure on there, they may have multiple different apparatus on there, and the information that was communicated to us was that a, a lot of jurisdictions, not identifying Milton particularly, don't do a terribly good job of itemizing all of these particular structures that are on these towers, making sure we have them accurately assessed, for a host of reasons, not only safety reasons, but also even tax assessor reasons, to make sure that we are valuing the true value of the property derived from the income stream by the structures that are on there. And the consultants recommended to us that we impose a fairly significant fee that would absorb the cost of the regulation, the regulatory effort that it took to go out and look at all of these towers to assess how many different structures were on them, to keep track of that no, nothing new was added that wasn't permitted through Milton, et cetera, et cetera, right? So that, that came a part of our ordinance. In the meantime, we found out that a similar sort of regulatory construct in Liberty County, Georgia, was the subject of litigation, because needless to say, the tower companies that were being regulated were not terribly excited about having to pay this one thousand dollar a year annual renewal and inspection fee. And so the council, I thought, in what seemed to me to be a very reasonable approach to hopefully safeguard as much of the citizens' money as we can, decided to issue a moratorium on that particular component of the ordinance, so we could sort of set back and, and watch and see what happened in Liberty County and decide whether this was in fact somewhere we wanted to go. Well, the moratorium was a nine-month moratorium, and it expired on April sixth, so just a few days ago, it was for nine months, or until the Liberty County case was resolved. Liberty County case is not resolved. The Liberty County case, in fact, our discussions with the county attorney in Liberty County indicated that they are attempting to modify their code to take out that provision, in which case they believe that will moot many of the issues in the litigation, and it will therefore resolve. So basically, they are attempting to modify their code. Since that is in fact the case, it does beg the question of whether the city of Milton should follow suit, whether we want to go ahead and continue or, or to renew trying to enforce this sort of a regulatory construct, or whether we want to think about it. My recommendation at this point is that we, we think about it. My recommendation is that in light of what Liberty County is doing, that we extend, renew and extend the moratorium for an additional six-month period. I'd like to work with your community development director and your city manager, and make a formal recommendation as whether we want to modify the code altogether and take that out, modify the code, and perhaps put in a reduced fee, to the extent that we believe that we can regulate this particular transaction for a reduction from a thousand dollars, which is what it was per, per permit, or, or whether we want to strike it altogether. But in light of, I'm not getting any clear legal guidance from Liberty County. That's what we were actually hoping to get, would maybe be an actual ruling, but what I think we're getting is a modification of their code, which doesn't tell me whether or not they were going to prevail. So I think my recommendation would be for you is to renew the moratorium for an additional six-month period, let the city manager and I and the community development director go over it, and make, and bring back a formal recommendation. Mr. Mayor, that's my recommendation.
Okay. Any questions from the city attorney on this agenda? Okay. Now I'll open up for your motion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt approval of a resolution for the city of Milton, Georgia, establishing a moratorium on the enforcement of the telecommunications operating license fee associated with the annual registration for owners and users of telecommunications facilities. Agenda item number one-two-zero-eight-six.
Second motion. Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Longoria, second by Councilmember Luss. Any more discussion?
I got a quick, one quick question. Do we need to state the length of time in that motion?
Thank you, Councilmember Hewitt. It's actually in the resolution itself, so it'll be six months.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. We'll move on to reports. Do you have anything that the council wants to report on?
Mr. Mayor, just very quickly, I just want to clarify, just so I don't mislead anyone, what the more the resolution actually says is six months, or until such time as the director of community development, city manager, and myself bring back a recommendation. Just want to be clear.
Okay. Do you, do you want, council have anything they want to report on? Okay. I'll move to our city manager.
Mayor, council. Excuse me, I've got about four things tonight to report on real quick, and then we'll get into executive session. First, is if you look at the work session agenda from next week, just want to make reference to the fact that there won't be a number three and a number four that are identical, so there are only three items on the work session, and then we will move into a town hall that deals with parks, so just a quick clarification there. I want to let you know our dates are firmed up for our council. I'm going to call it a retreat, call it what you want, we're not supposed to call it a retreat anymore, I guess, but that's what, it's a council work session. May fourth and fifth at Atlanta National, be working with our facilitator, who's going to help and assist in the facilitation of that, it's Marie Garrett, for those that know or have heard of Marie, she would do a fine job. She and I are going to start working on an actual agenda tomorrow afternoon, so information forthcoming on that. I appreciate everybody's cooperation in coming up with two dates, that was quite seamless. I didn't really think Christine was going to be able to do it, but I said, yeah, just see if you can get them all together for a Friday and a Saturday and see if it works, and it worked within like forty days, so thank you for making yourselves available for that. I want to bring to you a, an announcement from the Milton Grows Green Group as it relates to the Earth Day Festival, which is on, oh, April twenty-first? From eleven to three. Kathy Johnson, who's with that group, is asking if any of the council members would be willing to participate by giving a scripted history talk on the carriage ride that they have. Apparently, they had a couple people do it last year. You can do it for however long you would want to. It's a written script, and she's just hoping to find people that might want to participate in reading that script. You can either indicate tonight if you have any interest in doing that, and I'll report back if you want to send me an email, and let me know if you have interest in a time block between eleven and three on that Saturday. Let me know, and I will forward that information along to the group so that they would know when they could schedule you for us reading the script.
Is it a four-hour time block, or is it every half hour?
The event is four hours. If you wanted to do it for an hour of that four hours, I'm sure that would be very appreciated. I think last year they did it for an hour, in hour increments.
Put me down for an hour.
Okay. Anybody else right off the bat?
I'll do it, but I'll need to see what hour it's going to work.
Okay. All right. Cool. If anybody else comes up with an hour that, once they look at their calendar, if they want to volunteer for an hour, just email me and let me know. Another thing, I want to put, more or less put you on notice of, and bring you in the loop on, and then say that I'm working on it, and that's our city hall lease, the lease that we have in this building rolls through September the thirtieth of, of this year. We were knee-deep in the throes of renegotiating a lease extension for a portion of the building. It's for, the whole building, well, we built the public safety complex, and then a portion of the building as we move forward in future years. Last Monday at about noon, we thought we had gotten to an agreement, to a contract, and, or at least had gotten to an agreement on terms, to find out on Wednesday that this building and another property in Peachtree City were foreclosed on Tuesday, and ended up with new owners and a new property management company on Wednesday, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, a whole lot of work and agreement that seemed to have been reached on Monday at noon went out the window potentially about ten hours later. So, having said that, it's not intended to alarm, it's just a, a report on the fact that that's what's going on, that if you thought you were going to see something here soon, I thought you were too. We have reached out to the new property management company, as well as the new owner. They are getting their feet underneath them, and presumably will talk to us later this week. They are well aware of the advancements we have been making with the current, the former owner, so I'm hoping that really we don't miss a beat and everything's just taken in stride, but we've got new folks at the table. So, look for future reports on that, but that's not something you're going to see come forward in the next month, as I thought you might have, so there's the update.
Is the new owner, are they Atlanta-based, or are they based somewhere outside of Atlanta, or?
As I understand it, it's more of an interim group that comes in and takes these over until they find a, if you can use a term, long-term owner in this environment, I don't know that that exists anymore, but a new, more permanent owner. It's now owned by L and R Partners LLC. And it was owned by Petrus Partners prior to last Tuesday.
But they are not a long-term owner, they're just to work things out.
I'm hoping that they will agree to negotiate in the short term, so we'll see. That's what I have by way of staff report, and again, two items for executive session.
Okay. And our next item would be adjourned into executive session. Do I have a, for litigation and land acquisition?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any others? That's unanimous.
Yeah, well, it would be much more of a story if that one council member was in this meeting session because then it would be a conversation so. Yeah, that would be, that would be, that would make a story now. What did you, what did you do last time when we did like a case study for um, for the night session? We only have about an hour. I don't want to do any. See, I'm, I wanna do, do something more like, did you go down when we went down to the uh, capital? Okay, I wanna do stuff like that. Yeah, so I wanna do something more like that and I believe so like better at local level. Um. Now there are lots of wonderful examples. They've got plenty of examples, right? And we could always do, we could actually do two different ones. It's two groups of four steps. He's trying to take down a portion of the first step. And I thought maybe one of them would do more of a financial type thing. One of them more of a budget type thing. Well, I think it's been, no, it's definitely all of those, right? Yeah, and it's all of, oh, they're all of those. It's something that is, it's something that is, it's something that is. Sometimes you can actually see, sometimes you can see from size, I think. So. So. People do have more money, you know, giving more money and so, yeah, but there's, yeah, there has to be something one that could be done. Well, I, I've got a little chart, I, I've got like, I've counted people who like their, over the mayor's, over the mayor's, um, office jobs. It does, it does, it does, um, really, um. Um. Well, the next mayor has to use that power and I think what else, something they've got, um. What other things you could pick up that are different? You see, I don't think people even understand local government, government enough to understand. Well, I don't think, I don't think there's a good, good, good point that will say enough about local government. But I don't think people even understand the risk. Yeah. Well, I, I, I had to start off, I think, when they were formed, with that population, I'm out of population. So I just don't have, you know, the chart, I can do other things, I can, I'm just trying to make other different things that are kind of. Different, um, yeah, but it's here part because, um, I don't think. I mean, if you, uh, I think, well, I think we're in no one city, we're in Martin Luther's, right? There's different people. Yeah. Yeah, that is something. I've known for about three months now, it's not, it's not, they do it. I figured out. What else is there? Yeah, practice one, I saw that, what is, what is, what is it? I think it's, it's, it's.
Well, I may, um, are you gonna be in for that?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'll try to give you a call and see what we can do with some of this. I may send you my little chart to see if you can make any suggestions.
Aye, do I have a motion that we reconvene?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right, I got motion seconded. We're to reconvene all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You opposed, that's unanimous. That concludes our meeting. If I have a motion, we adjourn.
I so moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 You opposed, that's unanimous to adjourn. So...